In this project throughout and and you've been very well represented by your planner Jeremy DeCarly and town manager Dave Cox. So we go to the next slide. A little bit of agenda setting, we're going to do a little bit of an introduction about what exactly we're doing. What's the regional regional housing plan and the municipal annexes? What does affordable housing mean and why we have to do an affordable housing plan? And then and then exactly what it means for the town of East Hampton. We're going to look at some existing conditions, both your your policies, planning and zoning at land conditions that that would be conducive or not to future development. And then some of the the demographics and housing characteristics, sort of the the facts on the ground as well as some projections. And we're going to look at housing needs. What what does people's current and projected housing need situation? How does that line up with the affordability in town? And then very, very enjoyably, we're going to do a little bit of live polling. So hopefully, if you do not have, if you're not watching this on a on a computer browser, we'd ask you to have your cellphone available, if you have a smartphone, because we're going to do some live polling. And so this evening, your job was in addition to listen is to find out a little bit more about what affordable housing is and what how it relates to East Hampton and why it's important, certainly to to ask and get answered questions you may have on the subject. People who have been in virtual meetings before are hopefully familiar with the chat function, which is a little voice bubble icon in the lower portion of your screen. If you have questions there, just click the chat button and enter your questions in there. And we will address those as we are able and certainly at the end of the meeting. And then to, as we said, with the interactive polling, to provide some feedback on some potential strategies that East Hampton could take to take action on to encourage more housing opportunities. Okay. So the regional housing plan is being done again, led by River Cog. And this is a project in two pieces. The first is an overall regional housing plan that is a follow up to the regional plan of conservation and development that was completed last year in 2021 by River Cog. The first part is a regional housing analysis, which is again looking at at region wide trends. Because River Cog functions not only as a council of governments or a planning region, but also really in many ways as a job market and a housing market. And so there's a lot of analysis there about our trends and and challenges, as well as looking at ways that towns, generally speaking, could encourage broader housing opportunities and on housing creation. And then the second part of that project is municipal affordable housing annexes or appendices to this plan. Every town is required by section eight thirty J to do one of these. And so the local annexes will be folded into the overall regional plan. A little bit more about eight thirty J. I don't know if I said eight thirty G or J, sorry. It's they're very related and they're very like easy to to confuse. But eight thirty J, as in John, was passed almost five years ago by the Connecticut Journal Assembly and basically requires every municipality every five years to create or update an affordable housing plan. And really, the only requirement is that that plan point out ways that each municipality can increase its affordable, its stock of affordable housing. And that's really the only guidance. Towns are sort of left to their own devices and their own approach to figure out ways that fit their town, their circumstances. And the idea is every town required to think about this and to to identify some actions. It's sort of a bottom up approach to increase the the state's supply. But because of the broad allowances of eight thirty J of that statutory language, it's really an opportunity for East Hampton to put forward their own belief system, their own approach and and prioritize housing development in a way that makes sense for East Hampton. So what so we know, we know that we have to create an affordable housing plan. But what do we mean when we're talking about affordable housing? And this is defined under section eight thirty G, as in Guskowski, of the statutes, which is basically defined as housing that will not cost residents more than thirty percent of their annual household income. And the state's goal is that every municipality have at least ten percent of their housing units affordable, which means that they are deed restricted or income limited to households making less than eighty percent of the area median income, the AMI. And this is a standard that's used by by both federal and state housing officials. To bring it home in in East Hampton, those numbers are basically seventy thousand nine hundred dollars a year for a family of four or individual making just under sixty thousand dollars a year would qualify as this low income at eighty percent AMI. And when you further translate that, if you're making that level of income, if you're at the eighty percent AMI, you are a low income family or individual, spending less than thirty percent on your total housing of your total income on housing, that equates to about fifteen hundred dollars a month for an individual or about seventeen seventy for a family of four. And so anything more than that for people making eighty percent of the AMI would be considered cost burdened and and challenged to to keep up their their housing situation. So look at what's going on in, oh, sorry.
Can we return for a second to that definition? Maximum monthly housing budget. What's in that? Is that principal, interest, maintenance, heating? What's included in that?
Right, so for it's 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 split out, obviously, rent, you know, owner and and renter. So in in the case of a renter, that would include, you know, rent utilities, you know, heat, hot water, things like that. For an owner, that would be mortgage, property taxes, as well as utilities and things like that. Certainly, and and you know, HOA fees, if you're in a condo type situation. So it's it it is an all in housing number.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, and so a little I'll look at zoning and I so I understand that that we have a lot of representatives from the the Committee on Aging. We don't necessarily have a lot of planning and zoning commissioners here, but hopefully folks are familiar with how land use is done in East Hampton. It's a primarily residential town. There are several residential zones R one through R four, which, you know, allow various levels of density. It's anywhere from a half an acre lot to a basically a two acre lot, generally allowing one and two family dwellings, occasionally accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments by special permit. But it's generally speaking, a single family residential town at that sort of low and moderate densities. The town does have a couple of special districts that that would encourage higher densities of housing. Village housing overlay, which is a village district, sort of the the village center of East Hampton, does allow multifamily townhouses and duplexes at slightly higher densities. There is a an affordability requirement. If you employ, use this housing overlay where at least twenty percent of those units of the development need to be restricted to be affordable. There's also a housing opportunity development zone, which again allows a slightly higher density of development if there is an affordable component. But the the lot size of that development needs to be relatively large. And then there is a mixed use development, which is a floating zone, generally speaking, in the the residential districts, which allows, you know, uses uses as a right in those in those districts for so moderate sized multifamily residential developments. So there are a couple of zoning tools that have been put into place to allow for slightly higher densities of development. The town does have some area of infrastructure, particularly in the center, but and around the lake, I should say. But the majority of the town is dependent on on private septic and private well. There are some environmental constraints, obviously, look like Pocatara area is environmentally sensitive along the Connecticut River, the Aqua Protection Zone. Salmon River, so there are a number of environmentally sensitive areas where a higher level of development really isn't possible. And the and the plan of conservation and development, which you last passed in 2015, does reflect that. And and the town is committed to trying to preserve open space and undeveloped land for as long as possible in order to protect some of the scenic and environmental environmentally sensitive lands. There are a couple of residential goals in that plan of conservation and development that we can draw on. And again, developing density based zoning is is was a stated goal of the plan of conservation and development, looking at open space development strategies, including things like conservation subdivisions or open space subdivisions. And then looking at promotion of housing in the village center. So basically concentrate more residential development where you where things are happening and where you've got sewer and water lines to accommodate that sort of thing. So I think a lot of the goals are in the right place. So it's just, it may just be a matter of doing what we can to make those things happen. Okay, so let's look at the numbers a little bit and a couple of a couple of notes before we dig in is that the the complete census data has not been released yet. So a lot of the demographic numbers that we're going to use, particularly for population, are broken down by the American Community Survey, which is a five year statistical survey that was last updated in 2020 for the years 2015 to 2019. So this is primarily data that may be a couple of years old, but is is the best available. And we use data projections from the Connecticut Data Center. So I, you know, East Hampton has been growing over the last, you know, sixty, seventy years since the since the fifties that went from a town of about fifty five hundred up to over thirteen thousand in the year two thousand and has sort of slowly been creeping down. And this is around twelve thousand seven hundred as of the 2020 census. And that it is projected over the next twenty years to remain about the same. Maybe it go up a couple of hundred, drop off a couple of hundred over the next twenty years or so. And yeah, and and that that's again, that's a data projection. It's certainly not not the the town's destiny by any chance, by any stretch. But certainly, population is not expected to either explode or or crash over the next projectable number of years. There is, I think, unlike a lot of towns in the River Cog region, which is, I think, aging even at a faster rate than Connecticut, which is also aging at a relatively rapid rate. There are a pretty significant number of younger people in East Hampton, indicating, I think, that that it is become a popular location for for young families and growing families. The population, that that's not to say that that East Hampton is not aging because the the senior population sixty five and older has been consistently growing for the last twenty years and is over seventy seventeen percent of the total population. And that number is expected to increase. Again, East Hampton, I think, is has has a nicer blend of household sizes than a lot of our our communities. We did a presentation earlier this week for the town of Lyme, in which we pointed out that something like two thirds of households in in Lyme were made up of one or two people. And that's it. But in the case of Hampton, that number is fifty five percent, which is still more than half or relatively small households. But a solid forty three percent are made up of three or four families, which again, I think underscores that Hampton is a fairly family friendly community. So what we're seeing here again is that I think Hampton is a little bit more stable in terms of its population and a little bit more diverse in terms of its its demographic profile than a lot of communities in the in the remainder of the River Cog. It is certainly aging because this is Connecticut. But it we have, I I think, a decent range and and mix of households in the town. Okay, now so a little bit about our housing statistics. You know, East Hampton, like just about the entire region south of Middletown and Cromwell is extraordinarily owner occupied. Eighty eight percent of East Hampton is owner occupied as compared to seventy four percent in the rest of Middlesex County. Eighty three percent of the town is single family detached. Then there are some townhouses and some two families. And if you be get between, you know, single families, detached townhouses and two families, you're talking well over ninety five percent of your total population or your total housing demographic. So there's not a ton of multifamily, particularly compared to the rest of Middlesex County and certainly compared to Connecticut. So but again, a lot of that, I think this is a location where where young families and growing families can find those single family houses that may not be available in a in a place like Lyme, which is significantly more expensive. A little bit about the the distribution. Again, the 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 numbers to the the red bar and to the right are larger households or larger number of bedrooms. So the the pink in the middle is a red in the middle is is three bedrooms, which is half of East Hampton. And another twenty percent is four bedrooms and and another three percent of that is five bedroom. So, you know, more than about three quarters of the town is three or more bedrooms, which is basically larger households, larger sizes than the majority of Middlesex County, which I think, again, underscores the the family friendliness of the housing stock. These are the home home prices. Again, these are owner occupied units, not rental units. And again, what we what we saw is, I mean, Connecticut is not a cheap place to live. Middlesex County is not a cheap place to live. But, you know, more than more than fifty percent of the household stock in East Hampton is valued at under four hundred thousand, which is, you know, four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of house. But that's that's better than we're seeing in in a lot of the other towns in in Middlesex County. Rent distribution, and again, the the rental numbers, because, you know, we had almost ninety percent owner occupied in East Hampton. So the the rental numbers are relatively low. And again, relatively inexpensive. So, you know, over eighty percent of your rental stock is under fifteen hundred dollars a month, including sixteen percent, that's under a thousand, which is just slightly higher than New London County, although is East Hampton, London County? Sorry, I should know that. Okay, so that's I'm sorry, that was a typo on our product that that didn't that didn't sound right to me. So we that's a typo on our site. So that was we'll ignore that number, but look at housing permits here. And again, this this number, these numbers are relatively accurate. It doesn't account multifamily developments. These are basically single family permits. And obviously, you know, East Hampton, like much of much of Connecticut, much of the nation, had the the last big bubble in the early two thousands that that sort of burst around two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And it's been relatively quiet since then. But I think because of COVID, we saw in over the last year, things start to tick up a little bit, a little bit more housing activity. And it's not clear at this point if that's, you know, just a blip or the start of a new interest in in building communities like East Hampton. And so this is turnover of homes, home sales. And there's again, you know, we we saw the we saw the boom in the early two thousands and the and the the trough in the early two thousand and tens. Things have sort of steadily grown since then. And, you know, basically since COVID, there there's been a couple of relatively big years. And we're not sure exactly where things are headed after that. But but things, you know, are, you know, seem to be following a fairly reasonable cycle, nothing, nothing too extraordinary. Sales prices are are continuing to rise gradually and and pick up again over the last year or two because of because of some of this COVID booms where we saw home prices, you know, hop up between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars on, you know, and the median go up that that much. And again, you know, so the home prices are increasing and I think COVID accelerated that. And so we'll we'll see where things go after that. But the median home price for a single family residence is about three hundred thousand as of two thousand and condos were about one sixty six. So a couple of takeaways from that. Again, Hampton is a very rather homogeneous, single family owner occupied community, but relatively lower price than some of its its neighbors and family oriented, where we have higher numbers of of bedrooms in these in these units. And, you know, home sales, home sales, again, are on an upward trend in part, I think, probably because the the market has had not responded in terms of new permits to the people looking to buy in East Hampton. And so we saw that we saw that uptick. Okay, so we know what our population is, we know what our housing is. So how do these things come together in terms of housing needs? So this was the the, again, crunching the numbers in terms of what the the household incomes were in East Hampton of that we had low income, very low income and extremely low income. And those numbers were basically between fifty and eighty percent is low, between thirty and fifty percent. And again, these are percent of area median income AMI was very low. And thirty percent or less of AMI is considered extremely low income. And altogether, there were over thirteen hundred households, which is a solid quarter of East Hampton's total population, who meet the definition of low income, who are eight basically eighty percent or less of AMI. And these are primarily homeless, again, because East Hampton is such a such an owner occupied centric community. Of renters, however, we have, we have those numbers that at at low, very low and extremely low income. We're basically saying that folks can afford somewhere between fourteen and eighteen hundred for low income, between nine thirty and eleven thirty for very low and between five sixty and seven fifty a month for extremely low income. And again, that that cuts people off to to spend only thirty percent or less of their annual household income on that all in housing number. And then the the numbers for homeowners. If, again, you're going to try to get into the homeownership situation in East Hampton, you're looking at between two fourteen to two eighty five. That's what the the household value or the house value would be for low income, between one forty three and two oh five for very low income and eighty six thousand and a hundred one thousand for extremely low income. And so if we remember from a couple of slides ago, the average home value currently or the median home value currently, I should say, sales value is just under three hundred thousand for single family residences. And so basically, none of the folks in the in the low income category would be able to afford that median house. And so taking a look at the what that means in terms of cost burden. So low income renters, and again, that's that's all people less than eighty percent of the area median income. We have just under half of them, forty five and a half percent of renters are spending are forced into a situation that they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on house on housing, because there aren't those affordable rental opportunities for their income. And for homeowners, that number is just slightly less, but it's still significant, almost forty three percent of homeowners in are in that same situation, that they're 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 struggling in a house that's a little bit too expensive for them or significantly too expensive for them. And so for for other folks in East Hampton, breaking this out into age demographics, sixty five and older, thirty five percent are spending more than thirty percent of their income. So they're thirty five percent, basically thirty five percent of seniors are considered cost burden. And that number is even higher for younger younger adults, thirty five and under, almost forty percent are cost burdened. And then if you look at the owner occupied and renter occupied, more than a third of renters are cost burdened. And almost almost thirty percent of owners are cost burdened. So even in the relatively stable situation of owning your own house, almost three of ten of your fellow East Hampton residents who own their own house are are struggling with expense. So East Hampton's current stock of affordable housing units, again, these are deed restricted, income limited, or people who have CHFA or USDA mortgage assistance on a home they own. East Hampton has currently, there there are currently just under fifty five hundred housing units total in East Hampton. And of those fifty five hundred, just under two hundred of them are restricted as affordable, which is a three point five percent rate, which is obviously significantly below the the state's target of ten percent. So for the crunching numbers a little bit, we're looked at a basically a gap analysis. And so we took a look at the affordable housing demand in which we we saw the number of households that are paying to more than they are able to for housing, what the affordable housing supply is. And then SLR crunched these numbers to do a calculation of units affordable to low income households based on those HUD dollar limits. So we basically took the statistical samplings and and figured out what the gap was. So these are the top table is owner occupied units. I looking at the, you know, low, very low and extremely low income at those dollar limits for a family of four. There were, again, you know, there were a a number, there were there were over thirteen hundred, I believe, was the total number of owner occupied owners, owner households in the low income category. And the gap is between those those three is over six hundred owner occupied units that were basically missing in East Hampton. And then if you look at renters, those numbers are a little under five hundred for low, very low and extremely low income. So there's a there's a pretty significant gap in both owner and renter. And is that is that the same table?
Oh, sorry, this is this is for individuals.
For individuals, I'm sorry, the last one was was for, yes, okay, so for households. Thanks for the clarification, Liz. I I saw the numbers change, but then I couldn't I couldn't put my put my finger on it. So again, yeah, the the prior ones for households, this is for individuals. And again, so the individual home value limit is lower and the individual ability to pay rent is lower in these cases. And again, you know, we're looking at a gap of over a thousand for for owner occupied units and over five hundred, close to six hundred for renter occupied. So a couple of takeaways from there is that, you know, there are significant needs. Over thirteen hundred households are currently low income and could be eligible for this affordable housing. A good number of them are spending more than thirty percent of their of their income on housing costs. The town's current supply is relatively small in terms of its number, less than two hundred protected affordable units out of a out of a total housing stock of almost fifty five hundred. And those those folks, seniors, renters, young professionals, are all people that would be would be targeted for this sort of housing. Okay, actually, before we get to the the survey, I think it might be a good idea that that we had a question pop in to explain renter gap. And actually, I'm so I don't so I don't screw it up. I wonder if Liz, you want to jump in and
Sure.
the methodology.
Yeah, so let's let's go back a slide. So just for these renter occupied units. So we took the number of folks who are in this income range from the census data. So that's your, can you see my cursor? So that's this column. So this is, these are the households that are renters that are in this income range currently in the community. And then we have the units that are in this income range currently in the community and subtracted them. So that's why we've got this negative eighty here, because there are no units currently in the community that someone who can only spend five hundred and sixty two dollars on rent can afford. And so these are all estimates, these aren't exact numbers. Just want to make that clear, that even even the census does estimation. So if there if there is a unit that we're unaware of, that's why. But yeah, so it's it's generally, we're just taking the number of people and subtracting the number of houses that are available. I hope that answers your question adequately. All right, so let's switch gears a little bit so we can hear from you. So if you could open up a second window or tab on your computer or grab your smartphone and go to poll EV dot com slash SLR twenty twenty one. And if Megan, you don't mind dropping that in the chat for me, that'd be great. And this will take you to a page that will say where we're going to start a poll, just hang on a second. So I'm going to put up the test question now. And if that's popped up Um so I'm gonna put up the test question now, and if that's popped up for you, go ahead and answer it. There we go, we've got somebody already. I want to make sure we're, we're all getting in there. Excellent. Right, if anyone is having issues connecting, um you can say so in the chat or unmute yourself. Um before we get going. I'll put the instructions up one more time. So we've got about six people in, I think that's a fair number, maybe we can get a couple more, seven. All right. So let's, let's move on to our next question. And oh, chocolates kicking butt tonight, I I like you guys, you're, you're of my, you're cut from the same cloth. All right, so let's do a couple demographic questions, just so we can see who's here tonight. So what is your age? And don't worry, this is anonymous, um so you don't, you don't need to fib. All right, so about fifty fifty, everybody's generally over forty. Um well, what kind of household do you live in now? Single adults, a couple, are there children? Um is it some other arrangement? Okay, a lot of couples. That's, yeah, I've, I've never seen a one hundred percent doing this, I think, ever, so it's pretty telling. All right, how about your current home, what kind of house do you live in? Is it a single family that you own, um or one that you rent? Um are you renting a home or renting an apartment kind of thing? All right, seems like everybody owns their home and it's a single family. Right, um so we had workshops for the regional housing plan in October and in January. Um, oh, and we have folks who attended those, that's great. Thanks for sticking with us, and for the folks who haven't, thanks for jumping in to this process. Um we're, we're glad to have you. All right. So I think. Think we're plateauing, we're gonna get everybody we're gonna get. So John, do you wanna jump in and explain concept one?
Sure, so um after the, some of those, those basic questions, we're wanting to um ask a couple of opinions. Uh about some potential uh ways that the town of East Hampton could begin to expand its housing supply. And again, the purpose of an eight thirty J affordable housing plan is to identify ways that the town can encourage. Uh more development of affordable housing, so we have a couple of concepts, um we're gonna put out there and see how you like them. Um so currently, as I, as I mentioned briefly during the um the zoning overview. Is that town does currently allow two family houses in most residential districts, however. But it requires for some unknown reason, and and I was quizzing Jeremy about this, and we're not sure exactly what that reason is. Is that houses create, properties created after nineteen eighty-seven, and actually, it's a specific date in October nineteen eighty-seven, I'm not sure what that was, but. Um it needs to be twice the minimum acreage in that district and have twice the minimum frontage. Um to be a two family, so in other words, it basically needs to be subdivisible um in order to be a two family. Um the town also uh does require, does um allow some older, larger family, single family houses to be converted to two family. But that is only allowable by special permit, which requires a lengthier process, costlier, a public hearing, and that sort of thing. Um so there are allowances for two family, but it can be tricky. Um so the one way that we were thinking that could uh more easily allow people to expand housing options. Would be to make two family houses much easier to get, um a simple administrative process without requiring more land, frontage, public hearings, and that sort of thing. So streamline that process, so the question, we'll go to the poll, what do you think of that approach? All right, let's, let's declare victory and move on, I don't know, you tell, you tell me if a lot, if enough people have voted yet, okay, there we go.
All right, let's get a couple, couple more, I think we, we can get up to seven, so. Um let's see, if we can get one or two more folks.
We have a comment saying the app is locked.
Oh. That is.
And um since I've um unmuted myself, I would just like to reiterate that this is the beginning of a conversation and not the end of a conversation. So just because you say you would support something, um doesn't mean that that is one hundred percent something that we are doing. Means that we will talk to you more about it.
Should I have made it clear that this is not a binding referendum? This is not.
Referendum of seven.
Right.
Um, all right, so would anyone like to tell us why you chose? Like why you said support or not support, or what other additional information you would need? Um, this is a great time for questions or comments about this kind of concept, and we'd, we'd love to hear from you. Um so you can either use the raised hand function um on Zoom, or you can type in the chat, whichever you prefer. Or you can just unmute and talk, I think we're a small enough group that it's fine.
You know, this is Dave, the town manager, and I just would say that I think oftentimes, the concern that comes up when you look at. At allowing more density is, is often where that's gonna be allowed. And so I can see why someone might say I wouldn't support that, because it really depends on, to some folks, where that goes. Uh and of course, there wasn't a discussion of limiting that anywhere, it was just simply an allowance, so. You know, I think that's, overall, I think that's gonna be part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Sure, and and.
Density is one of the, probably the most primary way to create affordability. Simply because infrastructure is so expensive, land is so expensive, now building is so expensive. It, density becomes probably one of the only tools, and so where that occurs is gonna be very important.
Yeah, good point. Anyone else? All right, let's move to our next one.
Okay, so. The.
So sorry, little glitch.
Thank you, Liz, um so the town does have, as we talked about, a few sort of um higher level. Tools to encourage affordable housing and housing opportunity in town in their zoning regulations. So they do have um HOD, Housing Opportunity District Regulations, which does allow for somewhat larger, somewhat denser development. If a minimum uh set aside of those new units is restricted, so you basically, if you create some affordable housing, you get some more units as a result. This regulation, however, sets a minimum acreage for that HOD district, that Housing Opportunity District of ten acres. Um which generally speaking, because of the, you know, should average lot size and particularly undeveloped lot size. In the town center or sewer service area, there aren't many ten acre parcels just sitting around in sewer service area. So that ten acre minimum would basically push these HOD areas out to more rural or lower density. Uh portions of town, and there's also a maximum density of five units to the acre, which is not particularly um. You know, high, high density, although it's, you know, certainly higher than than um much of the town is developed, but it's not really what we call high density. And so another concept for increasing potential uh affordable housing units would be to do those two things, would be to reduce the minimum HOD acreage. So that it could be um placed in um more developed, higher, higher activity areas of town. Um and then removing that arbitrary maximum density limits and allow, even if you've got a septic system. Um to allow the soil to dictate your density, and so in in many areas where you have good soils for for septic suitability. You could get, you know, six, eight, even ten units to the acre. Um and and, you know, um we don't have to be stuck with that, with the arbitrary five, so. Basically making, making HOD a little bit more widely available in town and creating slightly higher densities, is that something you would get behind? Whoa. And I will acknowledge, I see the number of need more information for expressing support, I will fully take on myself uh the, the blame for not explaining that. Particularly uh brilliantly, but it is a, it is a complicated, it is a complicated idea.
My, my thought on that, not so much is your explanation, but uh we have a situation like in our village center. Where there are a number of buildings that could be converted into housing. Uh but you know, we, we don't have sufficient water, I don't believe, to sustain something like that. So you know, there, we talk about not having the ability to build any of these units um in the close proximity to the village center. There's other underlying factors impacting that.
Let's, thank you for that, John, and and you also anticipated spoiler alert, our third uh, our third poll question.
Um, does anyone have questions about HOD, who answered need more information that we could answer now?
And or and perhaps Jeremy could, could jump in as well.
All right, you could save them for later. All right, let's move to our next one.
Okay, so as uh John very nicely um previewed for us. Uh the tat, the current zoning regulations don't generally allow the conversion of existing commercial or office buildings. In, in business and commercial uses to those multifamily residential. Um and both the village housing and the mixed use districts are sort of overlay or floating zones. Which require a little bit of uh uncertainty and sort of a lengthy application process to, to switch things over. Um for properties that may be looking to do that, and I know, you know, East Hampton has a number of mills and old factory buildings and things like that, that they're looking to. Redevelop and perhaps water infrastructure is a problem. Um but we've seen, you know, even beyond sort of your, the old, old factories and things like that, we have seen very nice office and commercial spaces. Um throughout the state, throughout the nation, becoming less and less in demand, and office um buildings are increasingly empty. Uh and these could be opportunities to increase housing activity, particularly because a lot of these offices are in core commercial areas. Um where you've got a lot of activity and and access to shopping and civic life and and cultural opportunities and things like that. Um away from traditional housing neighborhoods. So the concept that we're putting on the floor um this evening would then be to make it somewhat easier to um convert. Uh existing underutilized uh office or commercial buildings into multifamily, and particularly in those um village center. Uh and commercial center areas, so is that something that is, would be appealing?
Our core five are all in favor.
Okay, the people have spoken.
Um would anyone like to share why they think this, this one is so attractive compared to the other two? Um why this appeals so universally?
Running, you know, the, the buildings I'm speaking of before were, they're close proximity to, to schools, to, to an area where we as a community want more traffic. You know, to su- support and sustain more business down there, you put people down there and and the businesses win too. Um, you know, we need to breathe life into that village center, what better way to do it than, you know, fixing those old derelict buildings. Into some nice residential properties and putting people in them, so win-win.
Another thing is politically, I think there might be less objection. Um when people worry about increasing housing density in a place where there are. Um, single family homes that are spread more versus where there are already clusters of buildings. And and density of use, I think there'd be much less pushback. Um to put them in the uh commercial and office type buildings.
I agree a hundred percent.
Um, I also think that if you look at the buildings that are, are in the village center. Um they're, they're very similar on a different scale to, to uh, to um projects that have been done in, in uh, in other cities. And and one of the, the uh, the nice parts is that you, there, most of those buildings are, are the, the ones that, like the ones that we have. Are, are set up for, for multi-use, you could have um uh affordable housing on, on the second floor or the third floor. And the first floor could be uh retail, commercial, um artists colony kind of place. Um of, of, that, they just lend themselves to, to a, a much more flexible um format.
One more thing that pops up is that uh our senior survey in town has found that there's. A dearth of transportation options for people other than private cars. And having a density of people coming to an area for housing and for business. Might help create a, a transportation nidus.
Yeah.
We have, um I, I'm sure Jeremy has a copy, but we would love to get, see a copy of that, of that um survey that was done.
Oh, we can get it too, yeah.
It's on the line on the, i- it's on the East Hampton Town website.
Great.
So, okay. So that's, again, these are, these are uh simply concepts to help start the conversation, they're, they're not, they're not binding um decisions. Uh we are not, we are not adopting our affordable housing plan this evening, but I think this is an opportunity to get people to think about. Things that a town could do within its regulatory environment, um to, to kind of e- encourage things a little bit more to, and. Uh kind of the, the best way that zoning functions is to, you know, decide what you want and make it as easy as possible for people to do that. Decide what you don't want and make it as hard as possible to have people do that, and so this is, you know, um ways that, that we can sort of turn those zoning dials. To encourage a wider variety of housing opportunities. Um, okay, so let's move on, so our next steps um from that, and obviously we'll have, we'll, we'll get to questions in just a second. Um but we will be uh convening over the next couple of months with East Hampton's core team, and if you are interested in participating in those conversations. I would um strongly encourage you to reach out to Jeremy DeCarly, uh your town planner, who is the um, the town's liaison for this project. Um we're going to be talking about these strategies, um you know, certainly some of the things we talked this evening. And there are, you know, dozens of other strategies that, that communities around the state have been approaching, you know, the things from simple um zoning tweaks. That we've talked about, simply things like um having, having more conversations with the real estate community, if Realtors about CHFA and USDA loans. Which can get people into an affordable homeownership situation, and then in some cases, you know, putting real money, real town money on the line. Um to help uh construct projects or incentivize developers um to build affordable. So there's a whole range of things, we'll be, we'll be talking about those things that are appropriate for East Hampton, again, over the next couple of months. Um we will, we will reconvene with a public draft um sometime in the mid-spring. And then be looking for um adoption, both uh local endorsement and adoption of the overall regional plan uh in early June. So it's a relatively tight timeframe, but this is not um an overly complicated thing. Uh it's, it's really just sort of about picking those things that, that East Hampton can do. And um is, is interested in doing to kind of um put their thumb on the scale and and get some more affordable housing in town. Um and so Jeremy is obviously the person to talk to, I've put my email there as well. Um and, which is fairly long, I would encourage you to reach out to Jeremy first, because you probably are. Um more used to that, but I'm, I'm more than happy to be a resource, um and Jeremy certainly knows how to get ahold of me. Um and then, so why don't we open it up um for, for additional questions or comments?
Question early on, um. We, we have inherent issues in Connecticut, um and you know, the whole Northeast, I think, but with things like, you know. Our electric bill is, is what, you know, so much higher than if you live in Florida, for example, you know, it's three times the, the, the. Price for power here than it is there, well, people here pay property tax on their car, you know, you live in Ohio or someplace, you don't, they don't even know what that means. They don't pay tax on their car, so all that plays into the percentages that you were showing. Of, of how much of your income, you know, can you afford to spend on housing, we're sort of pitted against the, the, the eight ball here with, with uh. You know, the deck is stacked against us in some regard, with things that we can't control as a community.
Yeah, that, the cost of housing is, is high um in Connecticut. It's, it is something that we can't really, as you said, we can't control on the town level. But there are things like zoning and policy that you can and, and maybe not fix the issue, but make it a little bit eas- easier.
Yes. How does a town like Lyme or Madison or Wilton or Greenwich, how do they, how would they ever, ever, you know, meet this, meet this directive of having 10% of their housing be affordable? It's impossible.
You're, it's, I mean, you're, you're chasing, you're chasing an uphill battle and, and, or you're, you're waging an uphill battle. And particularly when, when communities are encouraging affordable housing at rates like 20%, and then so you have 80% median, and so your, your denominator keeps growing larger and larger and larger as, as sort of that numerator of affordable housing isn't growing at the same rate. And I think, you know, people are maybe too focused on that 10% metric. And, and I think it may be important, at least for this, the exercise of this affordable housing plan, which is a five-year plan, is to take our eye off that, off of that 10% metric for a little bit. Because, you know, setting aside, setting aside the question of, is a town like Wilton or Greenwich ever going to get there? They're certainly not going to get there and, and East Hampton's certainly not going to get there in the next five years. So I think our goals and our, and our sights should be set on something more achievable and, and something to, to improve the situation within our ability to do so. And, you know, to the sort of the question about, about energy, you know, and not, not that multifamily is a solution for everything, but there are a few housing types that are more energy efficient than a, a, you know, a multi-story multifamily. You know, a three or a four-story multifamily is, each individual unit is incredibly energy efficient relative to a, a single-family residence, and particularly an older single-family residence. But the, the town could also, for those single-family residences, do things like, you know, tax credits and, and, and financing assistance for energy efficiency upgrades. And, you know, the, the price of solar installations are coming down all the time. And, you know, the town could do more and the state could do more to sort of put its thumb on the scale of, of those economics. But it's, you know, it's definitely an unfortunate, you know, cost situation. And it, the answer is going to be a, a series of a whole bunch of different things, not any, not any single action or policy. I've answered it all.
We did put a couple of questions up on the slide, just in case we stalled out and wanted to start some conversations. So I guess maybe it's the time for that. One thing that I would really like to know is if you had any strategies in mind that weren't covered today or any information that you felt like you needed to know that wasn't covered today that we could look into and get back to you with.
You know, as we look at the overall issue of affordable housing, you, you talk about the, you know, the information on, on the median, the median value of a house in East Hampton, which, if I remember that slide right, and it's back in the middle of the pack somewhere, but if I remember that slide right, the median household or the median value of a house in East Hampton is not frankly, all that much above the value of a house that could be owned by the 80% and below.
Right, those, yeah, it was a family of four could afford about $285 at max, and the median household price was basically 300. Yeah.
Just a little over 300, right? Is that what you said?
290.
Yeah, so. You know, those of you in the planning team have heard me say this before, and I think one of the things that we would want to try and, and see whether there's something to be figured out is, is there a way that that existing infrastructure of housing can be formally used, so to speak, or in some way made available or made to meet that calculation, if you will, for affordable housing? Because certainly those houses exist and they might happen to be occupied or owned by individuals who don't meet those requirements today, but they could in the future. And so one of the things perhaps that the town ought to think about is how it could be done that those things could become available or that those houses could become available in some way.
So I, I think that because you have, you're real close, I think, in many, in many ways, your, your 80% AMI is just, just below where your, your sort of average purchase price is. And in, with a relatively small gap like that, that's where a program like a CHFA mortgage assistance or USDA mortgage assistance is so incredibly valuable because the gap is so small. And that little difference in, you know, down payment or, or, or closing cost assistance or mortgage discount essentially, mortgage rate discount, could be the difference between that 80% household being able to afford an East Hampton house or not. And so this could be a circumstance where making sure that your, your real estate community in town is really familiar and really fluent with those programs. And so they are able to encourage those people who are looking in East Hampton and those, those, you know, they're just, just out of reach. Those, those governmental programs, those lending programs could be the difference. And, and you really could increase fairly dramatically your, your number of affordable purchases.
Right. So whether that's something that is, that is described in the, in the, in the plan or a resource that's identified in the plan, something, because I think that's, I mean, you've, I don't know that I've said it to Megan, but certainly others of you have heard the, heard the complaint of every time you turn around, there's a quote, affordable. I just did air quotes for those of you who can't see me, of course. There's a quote, affordable house that doesn't count, so to speak. And so to, to figure out ways to get those things included and to create those possibilities, perhaps goes a long way for the community to say, to feel, and this is going to sound terrible when I say this, to feel good about having affordable housing. And not having to say, we have to build something that is affordable because we have options for people. We just need to find out ways to get them connected to it.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point, but I would put, point you back to the gap analysis. So that shows the number of folks in the, those income levels and your available housing that's affordable to them. And with that gap, we can see that there's still a need for units, whether they're assisted or not. And I think you're probably right that a lot of those units that are in that lower price tier are occupied by people who aren't considered low income. So there, there is still a need for some new construction. But yeah, definitely working and promoting what you already have is, is very worthwhile.
This is Alana Kachoe. Hi, um, do, does property taxes fit into the equation?
Yes, it does.
Because I didn't, didn't hear any mention.
Yeah, so those maximum budget numbers include property taxes as a part of the 30% that people are spending on, on their housing costs.
Hey, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you. And, and Dr. Rosenberg was kind enough to email me the, the survey. And thank you for the.
Yeah, and I just posted on the chat where people can find that on the town website. You're welcome.
Oh, thank you.
If we don't have any more open questions, I'm going to ask my last two before I let everybody go. So I will ask, how do you feel about the current state of housing in your community? I mean, we gave you a lot of data. We showed you the numbers, but how does it feel to you when you, I mean, you live there, you see it every day? Do you feel like you have sufficient housing? Do you feel like you need more? Different types?
I said, did you want this as a survey question or conversation starter?
Conversation starter.
Yeah, I think we need more diversity of housing and not just single-family owner occupied as the very predominant type. And I'd like to see many more types of choices that people have to make optimized by the actual housing stock out there.
Thank you. And thank you for throwing me a lifeline.
I see, I, I live right on Main Street here, and I see is Bob Atherton from the Commission on Aging. And I see, I see a lot of big old houses. I, I, I grew up in, in an old New England town with a lot of big old houses. I lived in one not far from here in Willimantic for years, and then I lived in Vermont with the same way. So there's a lot, a lot of big old houses that, that the children leave and you've got, you know, mom and dad and then eventually usually just mom, living in these, these big old places that, that require a tremendous amount of maintenance and, and upkeep. And, and I, I see a kind of a, a tragedy of a waste of resources. Often what happens in, in a lot of towns is they get bought up and then chopped up horribly by, by, by some landlord and, and, and rented out and just slowly just, you're destroyed. Instead of, of spending some time and effort in, in, in essentially recreating that big old family that lived there. And I know there are some social experiments around the country. I know they tried one up in, in St. Alma's Vermont for quite a few years where people, you know, had the opportunity to take in younger boarders who, who could do odd jobs and chores around the house and everything. And I don't know, I don't remember what happened to it. I don't know if it's still in business. But, but the, the idea that the, these, there's, there's just a, a ton of big old houses in, that in the day had big families and, you know, now they're gone. And, and the newer families that are coming in, it's, it's a pretty overwhelming commitment to buy a big old place. Take it from one who did it. Yeah, 22 rooms. So. So I know what it's like to, to wander around the house in, in the middle of the winter with your parka on. So that's, that's a hazard. And, and I think that that's something you could be looked at.
Yeah, there's, you know, Connecticut has, has a lot of real big, real old houses that if, if it was done well, I think could, could very much be a, a real resource.
Absolutely. Any other thoughts? This is great. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you all for joining us. I hope that this was informative. We really appreciate your feedback. And we hope that you will continue to participate in this process. I would encourage everyone to check out the project webpage. I put it in the chat a while back. But I can drop it in again. It's rivercog.org/rhp. And you can view the region-wide presentations. They're really interesting. If you didn't see them, the first one talked a lot about housing market trends in the region and jobs and demographic trends. I think you would find it very interesting. We certainly do. Yes.
Can we get the slide deck for tonight's presentation? A lot of it went, was rich with information and.
Yes, absolutely. So all of the presentations and recordings will be posted to the website. So I will get that. All of the other towns as well, if you're curious to see what's happening everywhere else.
So we, yeah, again, thank you very much to, to Megan and River Cog for, for leading this effort. And, and obviously for Liz and the SLR team for sort of leading the, 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 the big analysis. And all of you, particularly Jeremy and Dave, for, for your help in, in bringing this together. And we look forward to the next steps in, in pulling together a plan for East Hampton.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.